I call the special call meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. And the reason we're having the meeting this evening is we've had a request from several board members to talk about graduation and what we can and cannot do. And I asked our attorney, Mr. Smathers, to look into what powers the governor has versus what we would like to do and what we wish we could do and what we're doing and et cetera. And I've asked Dr. Nolte also to give us an update on just clarifying more about what we're doing and helping answer any questions any board members have. So we'll turn it over, I guess, to Mr. Smathers.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay?
Uh huh.
Good, let me, if I understand.
Chuck, excuse me one second, do we need to approve the agenda first or do we just go into let Pat discuss the meeting?
Let's go ahead and approve the agenda, I didn't have an agenda in front of me, so I apologize.
That's okay.
So you want to make that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the number, item number three, approval of board agenda per Chairman Chuck Francis.
Okay. I have him. Mr. Rogers has seconded it and we vote by roll call. Yay or nay, Ms. Barrett?
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Burnett?
Yay.
Mr. Clark?
Yay.
Mr. Francis?
Yay.
Mr. Henson?
Yay.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Yay.
Dr. Rogers?
Yay.
Mr. Rogers?
Yay.
Okay, motion carries unanimously, we have approved the agenda and I apologize. Now we'll continue on with the agenda.
Hey, Mr. Brown, do you mind if I say an opening prayer for our board?
That'd be great.
Okay. Let's pray. Our Congress, Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the opportunities you've given us. We want to thank you for the citizens of Haywood County. We want to thank you for this country. We want to thank you for these children of this school system. And Lord, we're in uncertain times and things that we've never faced before. But Lord, we want to pray your guidance, we know you're in control, you're in control of this world, you're in control of us. And Lord, these decisions that we make for these Haywood County schools, for these citizens, for these children, Lord, I pray that your guidance upon us, that we make the decisions that are in the best interest of children, that are best interest of guidance. And Lord, thank you again for the staff, for our superintendent and for their staff that has led this school system. Lord, guide and direct us in all the decisions that we make and help us to be better people and better Christians in a walk of life with you. Guide and direct us in all that we do, we give you the praise and glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Now we'll continue on with our agenda. Mr. Smathers?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, board members, good seeing all of y'all, I guess, by internet here, haven't seen everyone in a while, but let me make sure I understand what the issue is that I need to address tonight. Currently, as I understand the situation for graduation here in the school system is since Central Haywood graduated today, Tuscola will be graduating next day or so, and then Pisgah is graduating on Friday, that the graduation ceremonies are being conducted with a drive-by type affair. Students will get out and they'll be presenting their graduation. Tuscolas will be on the, Tuscola, Pisgahs will be at Pisgah. As I understand, there's a question as to whether or not we can have a more traditional graduation ceremony, and I've heard in the stadiums here in Waynesville for Tuscola and in Canton for Pisgah, and would that violate the governor's order, emergency order? And to some extent, is that, is that order effective? Is that legal and binding? Let me tell you how I analyze it from a legal standpoint. First, we have authority to determine an enter a, an emergency order per the statutes of the state of North Carolina, and they have that, he has that authority. Anytime there is an emergency affecting the state, the governor can declare a state of emergency. Under the state of emergency authority, he can, he can determine what, within reasonableness, what is to be done for the good of the people. Now, the question is, is that, how do you enforce that order? Well, enforcement in large part is up to local officials, of which we are one. We, if the governor says the school system will do so and so, here in Canton, we'll make our, make our facilities available to a, in an emergency such as flood relief or whatever, we really don't have much of a say-so in that. So all emergency orders are subject to the governors, are usually enforced primarily by local officials. Now, does that mean the state cannot step in? Yes, if, if the local officials are not fulfilling the requirements of the, of the governor and state directives, they obviously could extend everything from state law enforcement to other state officials to enforce the rules of the governor. So the governor, in my opinion, and I don't think this would be questioned, has the authority and is the person responsible for occurring emergencies in the state of North Carolina. And then it's largely enforced by local officials, of which we are one, to saying that we comply with that order. Now, so there was some question in the governor's order about, you know, does, can the governor restrict certain things and order certain things? I think that definitive answer was made just this last Friday. There was a case rendered Supreme Court of United States, it's actually, it wasn't rendered until Friday, so, and I think it's, it needs to be considered here. This was the South Bay United Pentecostal Church and others versus Gavin Newsom, Governor of California. The governor of California had limited the number of people that could attend church in the state of California. The church filed for an injunction saying that the governor could not restrict a number of people attending church. The Supreme Court ruled five to four Friday, this immediate past Friday, it was just entered on May 29th, saying that yes, as long, the governor does have that authority and to limit the number of people attending church. The significance of that is that as important as the right for free exercise of religion, the freedom of religion is, and it can be restricted as to the number of people attending, then my opinion is certainly there can be a number of restrictions affecting a graduation. We have a right for freedom of religion which can be restricted as to attendance, there really is no right to a high school graduation. That is a ceremony that is, that is up to each jurisdiction as to how they want to do it. So answer, in my mind, the first question is, can the governor do in that executive order? Yes, can he restrict the number of people? Answer to that is yes. Now, the other thing that we talk about, our particular situation, I know people are saying, well, Union County is, is going to do some type of graduation and do a social distancing. The social distancing thing is alright, it's the number of people that are attending that would be in excess of 25. Currently, we are under, under the governor's order, no outside activity can be held involving 25 people or more. One of the problems we have here locally is, if I'm correct, the proposed graduation would be at the Wetherby Stadium and our Pisgah Memorial. Now, I don't know what's going on in Union County, I read all the newspaper articles I could read this weekend, and apparently, the sheriff has said he's not going to enforce the, the order of, of the governor. Now, it's also significant that they haven't done what they said they were going to do yet. I think they said they're going to try to do this at the end of June, so I don't know whether they're thinking the governor's going to lift the number on this or not, or what their thinking is. I've also read an article in the newspaper, said the sheriff is going to, in essence, turn his head, not enforce the governor's order. But that's up between, that's between that sheriff and his, his people and the county and the governor. However, the sheriff's not to say so on this issue, if we do it at these stadiums in Haywood County. It would be up to the town of Waynesville's law enforcement and the town of Canton law enforcement. I mean, in the sense, if we move forward and said, we're going to have a graduation, 25 people more in our stadiums, but we're going to do social distancing. You might can do the social distancing, but I don't think you can get to do it with 25 people or less in, in the facility without a lot of problems. But you would have to say, town of Canton, police chief, we want y'all to turn your heads. Town of Waynesville, Waynesville Police Chief and Law Enforcement, you got to turn your heads. That would be, one, I don't know that they would do that, and I don't know that they should do that. But that's the jurisdiction where our stadiums are. I would certainly think it would be oppositional, there'd be some opposition from the municipalities of that, but more so, I think it would put them in a very difficult situation in saying, we're going to turn our head as to the high school having a number of people there, and then somebody coming up a week and a half from now. We want to have a function of 200, 150 people in our town, and we want you to just turn your head. I don't think that's the message, and I don't think, I personally don't think that that, that we should ask the towns to do that. That's the one, those are the parties who have the jurisdiction on these stadiums as far as enforcing the law on that. The other thing that I would be very concerned about is that if the board takes the position to say, we want the administration to do this, I think you're putting your administrators in a very difficult situation also, because you're saying, we want you to violate an order of the governor and that's established for the health and safety of the citizens of the, of the, of the state. We want you to, in effect, violate what we understand to be the law. Now, we can all debate whether the law's valid or not, and whether the limits there and what Union Counties do, but as I see it, there is a valid legal decision of the, of the governor that says you cannot have more than a facility, you're violating that. The other one is, because I am your all's lawyer, the last reason I don't think this should happen, just strictly legal, is if there is a governor's order, which we have, limited to number 25, and the board takes the position, don't follow that order. My opinion, you are stripping away your corporate civil protection and going out on your own. And if somebody was to get sick at this, at this place, I mean, at either Tuscola or at Pisgah, they can face back to this, this function. And it's a, whether it's a faculty member or it's, which would be the most severe, because they're, they're trying to follow what you're saying, do as an employee, or the student or a parent that wants you to come to attend, the protection you have as a corporate board following the law would be questioned. In other words, you would have individual liability that may not be covered by the board's insurance. And I don't think, I can't in good faith tell any of y'all to follow this order and say, well, if, if somebody is sued, it's just not going to be the school board that's going to bear the brunt of this, it's going to be those individuals. The statute is a criminal offense, I think it's a, a class two misdemeanor, thousand dollar fine. Question is, who, who's going to pay that? If the board directs the principal at Tuscola, the principal at Pisgah to go forward, and, and Dr. Nolte, go forward with this proposal in violation of the, of the governor's order, there, that's in essence saying, we're telling you to do an unlawful act. And I think that would put y'all in, in the board and possibly individuals in serious jeopardy, for whatever the recourse is. You know, truthfully, if, if law enforcement says we're not going to enforce this and no one gets sick or nobody else, you know, what happens even if an individual says, look, there's a governor's order, I don't want my child to go to graduation there. You're telling me that, that my child has to attend an unlawful graduation, or we're not coming? I don't know what's going to happen, alright? Whether they would do that or not do that. I just see a lot of problems with this. So if you're asking, my opinion is that, that having a graduation ceremony at either Pisgah or Tuscola High School, if that's what the issue is, should not be done, because I think it would be an unlawful act. I don't think it falls within the governor's parameter, it violates the governor's order. There was some initial, people came out and says, well, when the governor came out with phase two, he said that we could have, it didn't apply to education facilities. That's true, and I saw that when it first came out, and we immediately started following up on this, says, well, hey, what about graduation? And we got clarification from the governor's office, and there's, there was a FAQ, Frequent Questions, that came back from the governor on May 20th, clarifying that, no, this is not to apply for graduations. That's also what the public schools of North Carolina have put out, that this is, that the, that verbiage in the, in the phase two order did not relieve the graduation requirements. That's my opinion, I think for those five reasons, the governor has authority, the governor can issue emergency orders, the California Supreme Court, I mean, the US Supreme Court Friday ruled that they're, they can do a limit on, on the freedom of religion, if they can do it on freedom of religion, and they can certainly do it, in my opinion, on graduation exercises. That the, that we would be in a situation where the towns of Canton and Waynesville would have to, in essence, not enforce the law as they're obligated to do, and as we are obligated to do, as a, a local official board. And then also, I think you're asking the administrators to put them, their situation, themselves in a situation where, hey, I don't, you know, is this, are we, are we violating something and following out the board's directive here? And then lastly, I think it would take y'all, put y'all to individual liability, should anyone question. That's my opinion, I don't think that this is something that ought to be done. I think it would present a lot of possible problems from a legal standpoint. And I don't think any, I don't, the only, the only one, the only situation I know of here in, in the state is Union County that is not doing some modified graduation. I mean, we're doing a graduation, is Union County, but they haven't done it yet. My understanding is they're going to talk about it tomorrow night, tomorrow night, and I don't know whether, since this case came out on Friday, whether that would have any effect on them whatsoever, but I would not want to be the lawyer in Union County telling somebody that this is, y'all, y'all are in good shape.
Thank you, Pat. The, the discussion did start with the fact that Union County had basically broken away from the, the governor's actions, and so I wanted to clarify that with you, to make sure that we were on good ground if we, you know, proceeded with something different than what we already had planned. And then the other thing that concerns me is the timeline of how fast we could do something, or, you know, you got graduations tomorrow at Tuscola, and I'm, I'm very concerned about, you know, people that have traveled from out of town to come, you know, witness this that are, you know, that's already planned, not that we couldn't have something else different, but I've thought about it a lot. I just would like to, Dr. Nolte, would you like to say some things that you maybe have found out since we talked last Friday about the possibility of this subject being discussed tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, admin staff who are logged in, and others who may be listening, since this is a recorded special meeting and people can listen later. Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Francis, if it's so much what I've learned in the last, but, you know, just to talk about the whole situation, first thing I want to do is thank you all for having this open discussion. We're known, I think, pretty well in the state for having a board that's transparent, and they, they talk about things, they, they weigh pros and cons, sometimes those discussions are not very popular, but they're always really healthy discussions, and so I appreciate your willingness to do this. I think the other thing that I just want to say, as your superintendent, in talking to principals and admin staff and teachers and, and parents that I know, is that none of us want this, none of us asked for this. I told the principals at our last face-to-face meeting in March, very early March, before school closed, that this, in all likelihood, from my health education and biology background, would get here much later than everywhere else, and we would be peaking at a later time. We had no idea at that time about phase one and phase two and phase three, but I just, I, I want everyone to know that we would love to have regular, traditional graduations, and we've talked about those and dreamed about those, and I've talked to some parents on the phone, I've returned some emails to parents, and I believe one student. So this is not what we want, it's not what we want at all, for this year's seniors or any year senior. As we began to plan for graduation, very, very early in phase one, we planned with those limits because we felt like that principals and the superintendent, we don't have the authority to just on our own violate a state governor's order which carries the weight of law. And so we told people that, and they, you know, people ask about, well, what if phase two allows more? And we were very clear, we'll do as much as we legally can. We were very hopeful that phase two would bring us much larger sizes, and it did not. And so we have worked very hard to recognize our seniors to the best of our ability in terms of our legal ability, and we will certainly do, you know, whatever the board decides to do in going outside of the legal constraints of phase two, but our principals do not have the authority to ignore that on their own, they have a teaching license that could be endangered, they certainly don't have a lot of protection when they're not following the law. And so, you know, we planned as best we could to follow the law, whether we like it or not. I think that one thing that I would say is, we've done that for a really long time. I can remember many years ago, following No Child Left Behind. I really disagreed with that, but I followed it because it was the law that was in place, and we're doing the same thing here. It is not what we want, it isn't. I have good friends who have seniors who are graduating in Haywood County schools this year, and they seem to understand what we're doing, but we're compelled, we're, excuse me, we're compelled by, and I think bound by, the law, and if we go outside of that, I think that will have to be something that you all decide to do as a board. And if you decide to do that, then we will certainly do our power to reasonably change how we do graduation, you know, to the best of our ability, whatever you decide to do.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ann.
If, say, before school, the school year started next year, and, and this, this thing lifted and would give us more freedom to, to get out and do something, could we not try to do something for the seniors then? I mean, and it wouldn't be the same, but at least we would be recognizing them as a group, and, and, and they could have whoever they come, you know, so they could be recognized and feel like they had some kind of a graduation.
Well, I think, Ms. Barrett, I'll go ahead and try to answer that. I think we'd be in the same situation that we were when we were in phase one and people were asking us what we can do in phase three, or might be in phase three. Certainly, we would not object to, and would, and would like to do something on a larger scale. This afternoon, I went down and watched Haywood Learning Center graduate from the side of the road, and they had a great time, but I don't know what we could promise this far in advance.
Well, yeah, we ain't saying promise anything, but just kind of see how it goes down the road a little ways, and then maybe then we could, you know, do something that would, would, we could recognize them in some way or the other.
Well, I think, I think schools do that all the time, they have classes come back and they recognize them on weekends at football games and things like that, I just don't know what that recognition would be. I have heard from a number of families who, this is their window, this is their current window, and they have guests coming in from out of town, and the guests are going to be here either riding in one of the vehicles that the company can have or being at the home afterwards. And so I do think we might lose a number of students if we, if we just waited until later, so, again, I didn't plan to be a lot of this conversation, this is your conversation, and I'm glad you're having it. What I would suggest is that certainly we proceed with what we have scheduled, and then if the board would like us to do something in addition to that or more than that, then, you know, we will sure try to get it done if it's permissible.
Alright, board, this is time to talk this out.
Mr. Chairman, I'll jump right in then.
Aight.
Alright. It's too late to make changes to what we've already got in place for Tuscola and for Pisgah. Our timelines at a deadline, we may have should, if we wanted to change something, we should have started this a week ago, but we didn't, so therefore, where, where are we at with this process at this time? The only thing, I mean, we cannot go to the stadiums, like Mr. Smathers, you may, there'd be a lot of changes and we would lose children, we would not have kids that would be able to attend, parents would be, we've already confused parents enough with our changes that we've made to this point. My only request, and the schools have done a great job, they've set up stages, they've done a lot of hard work at Pisgah and Tuscola as far as getting these kids, I mean, getting the preparations to have a graduation that the best that we can do. My only request, and my biggest request is, that we need to, the limitation of 25 people outside, if there's some way we can amend that, if you had like five or six students at a time at Pisgah, and the families spaced out, and I'm going to say 10 feet apart in front of the parking lot. and the families spaced out, and I'm gonna say 10 feet apart in front of the parking lot. And everybody else remain in their cars to celebrate the other kids' graduation, their friends, et cetera. Uh, that would, I know it's still violating the law, but me personally, I'm willing to take the chance. I'll pay the thousand dollar fine. Heck with that, don't arrest the principal, don't arrest the superintendent, put me in handcuffs. I'm uh, I mean, I'm to the point, I'm, I'm almost rebelling stage. Uh, this virus is, is definitely, it's definitely pandemic, it's definitely real, it's definitely live. But we have got to take care of these kids better, a little bit better. I'm not saying, well, no, we can't have it in the stadiums, we're, we're too far beyond that. We don't need to extend it another month or another year, uh, two months or August, et cetera. I mean, early college already changed August. So, you know, uh, we're hoping by August we can get our kids back in the classroom. So there, at that point in time, and I mean, you know, we, we need to, maybe, you know, like I say, make sure families are kept in cars. Thank y'all so much for doing a parade, that's wonderful, it's a great idea. And uh, those parking lots are big enough to house more than just the 25 people. And that, that's the point, the 25 relaxation of that particular rule is my biggest strangest point. Uh, opened up a little bit more, but use the social distance, use common sense. And I think it would also speed the process of the graduation a little bit to help these families and help these kids uh, get the graduation that they deserve. Thank you.
All right. The, I, my comment back to that Jimmy would be is I'd be afraid that it wouldn't be just you. If you, you're actually directing somebody to do something.
I am, you're right, I am.
Yeah, well-
You know, I may-
Then you'd obligate the whole board, I'm-
Yeah, I'll make it in motion a little while if I need to, but this is-
Dr. Nolte? Can you, Dr. Nolte, can you uh, sort of go over that email that you uh, went over with me earlier today about the procedure of what the current graduation is? I think that would clear up a little bit as to the number of cars that can, you know, come, each, each graduate could have and, and then sort of how they would uh, walk up, get their diploma and then go back and get in their car and also be able to maybe watch the other um, kids getting uh, their diploma during that time slot. Um, I think that might help clear up some things.
Yeah, I, I can do that. I probably don't want to read all of it like I did to you earlier when you called me today because it's several pages uh, for each school. But um, basically both schools have uh, their students uh, scheduled to come on campus in cars. Tuscola's is mu- much more flexible, allow the students to sign up in groups. And so I know groups of um, like students are signing up for common times. Some of the uh, seniors who are on teams or in particular groups. Uh, Pisgah's is alphabetical and uh, but they, they, they both have uh, students scheduled to come on campus. Both of them can have multiple cars in their procession, for lack of a better word. Uh, both have said to uh, students in the uh, written communication that has gone out that if they would like after they have um, individually graduated, they can pull into parking spaces in the respective schools and watch other students. They both said that. Um, so we, we have tried to be, um, and I have reminded the principals all along the way about the legal constraints that we have on us. But we have tried to be, you know, pretty open and pretty reasonable. Um, they both are limiting 25 people out of the car at the same time, but there can literally be uh, many more people there in cars watching what's going on. Both schools also did videos uh, that they have shared um, literally showing the students where to enter campus. Uh, one is a car driving through campus and explaining each station to students. Uh, the other is a more of a narrative by Principal Connor about the same kind of information. So there's um, ample opportunity for the students to have um, two or three cars of family members with them. And uh, they can have um, a lot of family members get out of the car with them while they're on the stage and uh, taking pictures. We just, again, because of the legal constraints of the state order, we feel like we can't go above 25 or we, we um, are violating the law.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I've got, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to say several things. Uh, one is uh, Dr. Nolte, if that's uh, if that's the information uh, that you were just sharing, that, that's an email form that you can share with us, that, that would be very helpful. Um, as we are asked questions to be able to, to answer some of those things. The um, and, and to that point, when it comes to um, graduation this year, um, personally, and it could be my own fault, but personally, I, I have felt a little bit like uh, we've been kept in the dark as far as what the procedures were. And um, and if we didn't ask, we don't really find out. Uh, even, even down to um, today, you know, I, I seen the uh, the message that Stephen had sent uh, about the trailer that was there. Uh, supposedly as a placeholder, I guess it's up to uh, each individual to, to determine if you really believe that or not. Uh, but I'm sure something different will be done now. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're very open and very transparent. And um, I feel like we, we could have had a little more information uh, from the schools and, and what the principals' plans were uh, that, that probably could have helped us as we were, we were dealing with the public and, and the constituents that, that call things into question. Uh, the second thing um, that I'd like to make mention is um, I, and I understand the uh, the power of the executive order. While it is not law, it, because only legislators can make law, uh, it does carry that authority and um, and, and has to be deemed under a state of emergency. Um, Mr. Mathers, thank you so much, you done a great job explaining that. I was trying to get all that in my head, but you, you made it a whole lot clearer for me as uh, as to what I had read. Um, I, I understand all that's been said, however, um, I don't see a whole lot of arrests made when people are protesting, blocking 240 in Asheville last night. I don't see a whole lot of social distances or regards for uh, the governor's executive orders in, in other matters. Um, but as a school system, I, I know that um, we're not leading a protest or, or leading a march. So there is um, there is a little bit to that. The um, it, it, it's, and I also understand, like Jimmy said, that um, that we are in this uh, this pandemic. And I've heard people call it uncertain times and call it a pandemic. Um, but if this is a pandemic, then we're in a pandemic every year under influenza A, influenza B, where the cases are much higher, with a much higher death rate, uh, with pneumonia, with a much higher incident and death rate. And uh, so I guess every year and every situation and every disease and everything new going forward is gonna be a pandemic where um, where the governor gets to make decisions uh, rather than municipalities. But I, I guess that's my own argument. Can, when we go to um, when, when we come to what's happening right now uh, with graduation in Haywood County, I, I feel for the students. A, a lot of them, you know, we know uh, these are real loose statistics, but we know that um, at the end of the day, after about two years from now, uh, 60% or better of the students will go straight to the workforce, they'll never have another graduation. So I, I feel for them because this is a very monumental time in their life. And, and I want to make sure that uh, that, that we do this as right as we possibly can. And um, uh, they're always gonna feel a little short-changed. We, we probably as a board and I'll, you know, I'll shoulder, like Jimmy said, I'll shoulder some of the responsibility here. Um, this conversation should have been a conversation that we had a month ago. And um, and, and, and maybe we could have got a little farther by pushing a little harder and I, you know, trying to get uh, attention and, and authority given to local municipalities. Because in Haywood County, uh, these are the best statistics I have. It changes hourly it seems, but you know, we've had 49 cases of, of COVID-19 in Haywood County uh, with zero deaths and uh, zero cases that have ended up in hospitalization. Uh, so that tells you a little bit about the severity uh, that we're under here in Haywood County. I know it's different in, in Wake County, I know it's different in Mecklenburg County, but um, Haywood County could have been doing things a whole lot different. As we stated from the very beginning of this, we wouldn't have shut school down when we shut school down. There's a whole lot of different decisions if this would have been handed down to the appropriate people right off the bat. Uh, the president handed it down to the governors, the governor should have handed it to municipalities and we could have made better decisions for our communities at, at that point. But that, again, uh, that's my political position, I, I guess. The um, there's nothing that I would like to see anymore uh, than a traditional uh, graduation. And, and I guess with, with all of that said, here's the one thing for me as um, as a pastor and as a, as a believer and as somebody who tries to uh, to uphold uh, the word of God as my high, high standard for living. I fail a lot, but it's still my high standard of living. Uh, I'm haunted, I know that's not a word that a pastor says very often about the word of God, but in this case, I'm haunted by um, Romans chapter 13. Um, and if you don't mind, if you do mind, I'm gonna do it anyway, but just being nice. Um, you know, the, the Bible says in, in verse one, it says, "Let every soul be subject unto the higher powers; for there is no power but of God. The powers that be are ordained by, or ordained of God. Whosoever therefore resisteth power, resistest the ordinance of God; and they that resist shall receive to themselves damnation." So you, you know, in other words, uh, the writer of Romans, uh, by inspiration of God is saying, uh, n- nothing's happened in this world I don't know about, I'm still the sovereign God. And um, and, and, and he's allowed governments to be established and, and, and we're supposed to um, to listen to that. I, I, I do think it, when it goes against the word of God, Apostle Paul said, we're, we ought to obey God. Um, but in this situation, it's pretty fitting pass, passage of scripture that's haunted me over the weekend. And um, I, I just wish that um, we would have began earlier and maybe been a little more creative in, in our approach as a board to try to uh, to, to help these students that, that really wanted to walk across this stage to walk across the stage. That was a long-winded answer, I, I understand, but I, I, I got it off my chest, whether it helped y'all or not.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Rogers. I think the frustration that you've, have shared is, is shared by the whole board and, and you know, we were doing a lot of things during this whole thing and, and learning a new way of meeting even uh, through this electronic media. And um, so we had a lot going on, I'm not making excuses, you're exactly right. We should, we probably should have been more involved in it from the start. Um, anybody else have comments they'd like to make?
The only comment I got to make is, is law enforcement gonna be there? Anybody gonna be there counting heads anyway?
I don't know the answer to that.
I heard uh, in one of the uh, videos, uh, one of the principals say that a law enforcement officer or a teacher or staff member would be escorting students to and from a stage. So I, I feel certain the SROs will be there. I'm not, uh, I don't, I don't know about the others.
They're gonna be there to help traffic control.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
That's what I've heard.
Oh man, I just hope it, you know, we're not, nobody's there counting heads and running people-
Nobody's gonna be there jumping on our kid, no, no. That's, that's my word I've gotten.
That's the only thing I'm concerned is we don't go overboard with how many people's showing, you know, standing around or whatever. Let them do what they wanna do.
Let them, yeah.
I'm done.
Be relaxed.
Anybody else?
Yes, I've got a couple of things, Mr. Francis, if you don't mind. Let me, let, let me try to get on my soapbox, it won't be as good as Dr. Rogers there. And Dr. Rogers, I appreciate you standing up and saying what you did. I mean, this is, this-
Did we lose you?
Oh, Stephen, come on.
Information, so, but getting back to the thing, the picture that I sent out today, first of all, I'm gonna be very disappointed if, if that situation was what was going to happen. And when I say I'm gonna be very disappointed, I'm gonna be very pissed because the students now at this point have had their graduation taken away from them and we better give them what we can and it better be at the highest availability of what we can do as a school system. And it better not be a makeshift trailer sitting in the parking lot. So if that is not going to, if that's what was going to happen, I'm going to be mad. But it better be changed tomorrow and it better be nice. Or I will be mad also. The second thing I would like to know, and Dr. Bill, you can answer this if you know the answer. Have, with the administration, have they told the students at Pisgah and Tuscola, have they told them that they've got to wear black slacks like a traditional graduation? I know that you can't mark on your hats, you can't do this, you can't do this. You have to sit with your legs crossed, your hands on your left side or whatever. Have they been a informal or have they been a dress code put out to what they're supposed to be wearing?
The written material from the schools uh, speaks a little bit about that. Um, Pisgah's is more traditional uh, in their um, request of students to dress uh, nicely and wear caps and, and gowns. Tuscola has relaxed theirs a good bit um, and has asked them to dress comfortably, but to try to avoid shorts and flip flops. Um, the, the graduations are similar, but they all are also different. Um, Pisgah's is probably a little more formal in that they're lining up by ABCs. Um, and uh, their dress expectations are a little um, a little more consistent with a traditional graduation. Tuscola has been, uh, I think, uh, very accommodating to students and letting them pick their own times so that they can be with other people that they feel like they're closer to. And they have given some restrictions on the dress code.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Um, how, sorry, Mr. Francis, I couldn't get my thing off of the mute.
That's okay.
So now let's get back to the dress code. So it's going to be, I mean, I don't know whether they don't be, I've, I've had a couple of people call and said it, said that they feel like if it's a graduation out in the parking lot, that the kids should be able to wear what they want to, so on, so on. I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, but still yet if, I know one big thing about school is not marking on the graduation cap. And I know that we had something like that happen three or four years ago, and then all of a sudden it started changing since. They're the ones that buys the cap and gowns, but they can't write on them, which still behooves me. Uh, and I feel like that's something that the kids should be informed, which, uh, I mean, it's still up to the administration unless this board gives them a directive. If they want to mark on their cap, they should be able to mark on their cap as long as it's nothing offensive or putting down something or anything else. Uh, but like I said, I don't know what the, how the board feels about that when it comes to the dress code. But I feel like the dress code, everything else is untraditional. So why can they not be untraditional when it comes to the dress code? As long as they've got something covering up their body. Uh, and let the parents decide what the kids, if they want to wear just shorts and a flirty shirt and their cap, then that's, that's their choice. Since this is untraditional, the way that things are being done. And, uh, enough on that. Now Pisgah, I have not heard nothing out of Pisgah as much as I have Tuscola, because obviously I must, I'm on this side of the county. But now did someone just mention that Canton is having a parade for Pisgah High School? When you say a parade, what are you talking about?
The, the town of Canton's doing that, Mr. Kirkpatrick. The school system has nothing to do with it.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's not the school that's.
No, if Gary Caldwell wants to have one for Tuscola, all he had to do is say so.
Okay, so.
That was all done through the Canton mayor and alderman.
Uh, I would, um.
Canton is having a parade. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, on dress code, we, you, you all, especially those of you who've been on the board for some time, remember lots of things that have happened in the past with beach balls and cartwheels and, um, we've done a good job over time, um, tightening that up. So it seemed more like a traditional graduation. We have a lot of graduations and they're all a little different. Um, the learning center that I went to earlier today has always been, um, a, a, a little different than Tuscola and Pisgah or Central Haywood, or certainly the early college. And so in the past, we have given the schools, the local authority to design their own ceremonies, not just graduation, but all of the ceremonies that they have. Um, and we've done that because those schools are different. Uh, they have different students. Tuscola and Pisgah are more similar than the others, but students are different at Central Haywood and, uh, at the learning center. Um, uh, the early college, which does most of their stuff with the college in Pisgah and Tuscola. If, if you all would like for us, uh, to develop, uh, a dress code for graduation and, um, you all approve that, we can certainly follow it. My, my concern is, is that they are very different schools. Uh, and that's why they've been a little different in the past on that and some of the ceremony components.
Yeah, well, I wasn't as much, I'm not stepping on nobody's toes, Dr. Bill. Just what I was saying is this is a unconventional graduation. And if a kid, that, that, that is something that should be sort of left up to the family if they want to wear their cap and grant, gowns. Uh, or whatever they was wanting to do. I, I just had heard that they was a memo or an email or all the graduation class was told. And I, it was at Tuscola was told. Now, I don't know whether this is true or false. This is just what a phone call I got was that they was told if they did not dress in a certain way, they was not going to get their diploma. I can understand that if we was in a traditional graduation. Cause we've always let them do what they want to. We've never, as a board, and we always have let the administration deal with the graduation like they have been. We've fussed about some of it, but we've always let that be held up with them. So this board does not want to get into telling a school system how to do the graduation. I was just saying that this situation is different than any. And if they want to mark on their caps, I think that they should be able to mark on their caps. Uh, but in saying that, I can't think of nothing else now, or I've already lost my train of thought because I got off on that. But Mr. Francis, I'm done for right now, but I just wa, I just want to make sure that they are no trailer sitting in, I will, no trailer sitting in Tuscola parking lot. And the kids are standing up on a trailer with wheels that don't have nothing around it. Looks like a cattle trailer. But thank you, Mr. Francis, for the time.
Yes, sir.
Hey, and, uh, Mr. Francis, I, I know I've probably spent my time up, but, um, I'll have to, uh, agree with Stephen on that. Uh, this, this is very unconventional times that, that we're living in and, um, you know, I can understand why you would want things very formal in a very formal setting. Uh, but this is not going to be a very formal setting. And, and these kids have been robbed of so much. I don't want to get into business of, 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 of establishing how the schools do graduation every year, but this year, um, I don't think it would hurt if we, uh, gave, um, our guidance of relax a little for a year, for this year in, in, in this time. So I do, I do, I do agree with Steve. But the, the real reason I wanted to jump in here is I need a point of clarification from Mr. Smathers. Um, now, w- w- when we say, um, and Mr. Rogers asked this question earlier. Um, when we say that no mass gatherings over twenty-five people and, and then Mr. Rogers made the point that, um, you know, they would like to have more people up on in the parking area to make things go smoother. Um, I, I'm pretty sure, un- unless I've just completely missed it, uh, that, that twenty-five people is really referring to the twenty-five people that are out of the car. Uh, how many peoples in the parking lot in their car really don't have an effect, right?
That's, that's my understanding of that, be my guidance. I mean, the, the intent, the intent of the, uh, order is to prevent close interaction and the spread of the virus. Uh, and it, the twenty-five limit is, the actual, I was looking to see what's that FAQ says is, uh, uh, an event that brings together more than, uh, twenty-five people. Uh, well, brings together to me means that you are within on that, a contact, you have a chance of virus. I mean, frankly, I think that as long as, if there's an area cordoned off and no more than twenty-five people are within the area of the graduation stand, uh, not trailer.
That's clear.
It's clear, uh, within twenty-five people within the graduation stand, that, that's okay. Those twenty-five people move on and I think we're safe with that. You could have a hundred people sitting in cars that are in their car, getting in the line or watching. Uh, if one child has, uh, it brings his family and there's three carloads wanting to sit in the, uh, uh, parking lot away from the, the stand. I don't see that as a problem. I think it's the close interaction that we've got to protect from.
Thank you. That, that, that's what I thought as well. I, it didn't make any sense because you.
I don't think, I mean, uh, and the, the practical thing of that too, is I don't think anybody's questioning, uh, drive-in theaters, drive-in, uh, church services, drive-in. It's the, it's the close interaction of twenty-five people together within breathing, spitting, you know, bodily fluid, you know, contact airflow that you could suffer from is, is, would be my, be my understanding of the intent.
All right, thank you. And, and that's, see, that's part of the problem that we're facing right now is, you know, you've got, you, you, you've got way too many experts telling you what's going on. The CDC says wear a mask, that WHO says wearing a mask don't, don't help. And then you got this, you got that and, and, and then you got, uh, a mask order that you got to try to follow. It's just, it's, it's insanity. There, there's no wonder there's civil unrest.
Chairman, Dr. Rogers and Mr. Pat. Thank you. Cause they'll, that's, uh, that, that was the clarification that I think that hopefully we need, we need to express that to the public as well, because that's where the questions I've had. I asked, like I was saying, y'all, okay, so that means twenty-five, y'all, but you can have a hundred cars. You could have two hundred cars out there as long as they're keeping socially distanced and staying in our vehicles. Uh, yeah, we need to, we need to make sure that the public is aware of that. I know, I know we've tried. You know, Dr. Nolte, I know you've tried and, uh, it's just things that, you know, I just want to make sure that that is well-known and, uh, if there, if there had to been a motion, like I said, other, Mr. Chairman, that's something I was going to say. Relax that twenty-five rule or make it, make it known that, that means within that distancing of, of, uh, staying within, within a, within a realm of, 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 of distance.
Okay. I, I don't think it'd be any reason to have a motion.
No, there, there shouldn't be now. If we just make, make it transparent and make it known. Luckily, it's too late to change anything we're doing right now.
Yeah, well, I think it's a point, it's, it's a definite point of clarity that, that people need to understand. And, and just like Stephen was saying, it is, as far as, you know, I don't know that we, um, have to make a motion, uh, we probably do need to come to some kind of consensus, but, you know, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, uh, what Mr. Kirkpatrick was talking about, uh, as far as, uh, dress codes and in a very informal event, I almost think it's, uh, uh, I don't know, it's, i- i- it seems sort of odd to me. Funny is the word I was going to use, but, uh, it, it don't even seem like it makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, they're going to be wearing a cap and gown anyway, right?
They'll do what they need to do this year because they've already had a lot of losses.
I always, I was always taught if you do it in front of your mama, it's probably okay. Uh, Mr. Francis, uh, if I could just.
William, woman, I'm not sure that's right.
Mr. Francis, if I could just follow up on a couple of things, board members, uh, I will, uh, scan in the written information that I have and, um, send it to you in an email later this evening. Uh, I'll also try to send you links to the school videos that have been, uh, shared out for students and parents to know more about that. Um, all throughout this process, uh, from our office, we have talked, uh, in particular to high schools about grading and how this was a period, uh, in which we should, um, place grace, uh, before grades, uh, n- not that we should make up any kinds of grades, but if in doubt, we wanted to give students a reasonable benefit of the doubt for high school students who are getting numerical grades. Uh, I told, um, the principals of the two large comprehensive high schools earlier today that we were meeting. Uh, I didn't talk to them about it until today, uh, but I also told both of them that I would call them after the meeting and I will, um, I don't know that we can get a lot of information to everyone before in the morning that would change anything, but I will let them know that, um, our approach for, uh, grace over grades should, uh, at least for this year, probably also apply to attire, uh, and what students are wearing. So I'll pass all of those things along to you and to the principals of the two large schools, uh, later this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. I think that would be appropriate and I'm, I don't think there's any objection to doing that. And as we said, this is a special year. And, uh, let's, let's be relaxed. Okay?
The only one, only comment I'd make about the dress is just remember that they're going to have five days made and people will be looking at them for the rest of their lives.
Yeah.
One other comment too, Ms. Chairman, I was thinking about that, uh, well, shoot, nevermind. Lost my train of thought. I'll get it back in a minute. Go ahead. Next person.
Anybody else have a comment or question?
Chuck, I have a comment.
Okay.
I like everybody else. I, I wish the seniors could have a, you know, a normal graduation and their normal celebration. But I do want to say that the administration's been put in a really tough spot this year trying to figure all this out. And that thinking, and we all thinking that maybe it's going to relax before the time gets here and so forth. So, uh, I just thank them for all their hard work and dedication and making this happen, uh, happen within the law. So I just want to pass that on to the administration.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett and Ms. Barrett. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Francis, or, or, I, I know this was a special called meeting, so I, I don't want to go out of bounds here.
Okay.
But are we, are we allowed to, to discuss any other subject or does that get a bit something that needs to wait till the next board meeting?
Since we had a published agenda, the subject matter would need to stay within, and we approved the agenda earlier tonight. I would, I would ask that you would hold it until, is it something that would be considered an emergency type issue or?
No, a- actually it was more a matter of public information. You know, um, the rumor mill's beginning to flow now about, um, start up a school next year. Uh, what's the latest on athletics, uh, contact sports, you know, all of those things as we look forward into next year. I, I really feel like, you know, we, in, in, in dealing with what we had in front of us, we've, we've muddled through the best we could. Uh, but now that we've been in this a while, we know we've got a new school year coming up. Things are probably going to look a little bit different. You know, what are, what's the superintendent hearing, what are, you know, and that may be a conversation we need to have another time and that's.
I think if you, if we could do it, Dr. Rogers, I think we need to have a, a work session that, uh, we have as much information as we can possibly get about that, because I'm starting to get questions about it too. Are they going to open schools up? How's it going to look? What's it going to look like? And, and quite honestly, we need to know because if someone said on the phone today to me, you know, we're talking about a couple of months and we're going to be back at school.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we need to know these things. And, uh, so I would ask your indulgence that we could give our administration a chance to collect the information as best we know. And, and have a work session here in a timely fashion. I mean, as sooner rather than later. And, uh, that would be my suggestion.
I've had a few people ask me the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, I know that Dr. Nolte is a planner and, uh, I know that he, he has a, a, a short term, a medium term and a long-term strategic plan for opening schools. So I just want to crack inside of his head for a little while.
Okay.
Well, if I, if I might, Mr. Francis, we have, uh, or we expect, because we do not control the, the source. We expect an update from the state on Wednesday regarding the reopening of school. Now, I don't know if they'll tell us anything of substance, uh, but we do expect a state announcement on Wednesday. That is what we are hearing. And then certainly, uh, you know, we have a regular called board meeting on the fifteenth. We could do a whole lot on that date. Um, the, the, your meeting on the fourth is primarily a personnel matter, but we could tell you what, what limited things we know at that meeting, but you know, there's, there's, um, there's not a lot there and, uh, that we know at this point. We do expect, uh, some type of announcement on Wednesday. I think Mr. Francis has got a good idea if we, if we can just schedule a work session.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll, I'll get with the superintendent. We'll work something out. We'll, I'll get with the superintendent, we'll work something out when we get some information, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do have my train of thought back.
Oh, it came back.
Man, it came back to me. You know, we're videoing these graduations, YouTube, et cetera, like that. Would there be a possibility we might can look into how our board meetings are on the TV channel and stuff like that, and would there be a possibility, maybe letting that, the channel, whoever does our board meetings on the, on the TV channel through Spectrum or whatever it is, and like the ministers, all that? See if they might be willing to maybe publish their graduations on the, on that TV and channel, it'd maybe a goodwill favor to us, or at a small expense or whatever. I think that would be another good thing to help. Somebody might not get to go to graduation, maybe look at it on TV.
It's a good idea.
On our county channel.
Okay.
Excellent idea.
It is.
All right, that was it, man, I've just had one brainstorm, buddy.
All right. I like it. We'll have someone check into that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be discussed? Oh, Mr. Smathers?
Well, I was just getting ready to say goodbye, I just turned on...
Oh, okay.
Are you ready to leave?
If there's nothing else, then we'll have a meeting adjourned.